enthusiastic people here to talk to us about what we're doing in this city with regard to reentry. I should start with roll call.
Councilmember. Hold on. Councilmember McGidger, chair present. We have no other members currently present. This will be an informational.
Very good. And thank you all especially for trudging over here to our temporary location which is thirteen forty Boeckers Street, the twenty-first floor conference room. Let's see, we are going to hear from several speakers today about their organizations and about the services their organizations provide. I'm gonna take a few minutes to introduce the speakers. And it's very impressive introductions. I had to cut them a little bit short, some of them, but I'm gonna give you a good gist of it. First is James Logan. James serves as the reentry services program manager for the City of New Orleans under the NOA for Life Reintegration Services Initiative. He is charged with facilitating a strategic plan to increase the options and opportunities for success for Orleans Parish residents transitioning out of incarceration. He's also the author of the City of New Orleans' banned box policy which grants a fair chance at government employment to individuals with criminal histories. Next is Stephen LaSalle. Stephen LaSalle has been with the Department of Public Safety and Corrections, Adult Probation and Parole for eighteen years. He currently serves as the district administrator for the New Orleans District. The New Orleans District at full staff has sixty people, however, there are currently seven agents, they are, they are currently seven agents short. So if anyone's qualified out there and wants a really good position with an agency that is totally dedicated, they should get in touch with the probation and parole office of the Department of Public Safety and Corrections. So it's the largest district in the state supervising almost six thousand felonies. Stephen also serves the department on several committees, including the reentry committee. He has also served as president of the Louisiana Probation and Parole Officers Association and currently serves on the association's legislative committee. Next is Ashgar Zab. Ashgar Zab is in, he goes by Ash, is the president of People Building Communities, a nonprofit, and he's also a Desert Storm veteran. Since getting out of the military, Mr. Zab has been in the commercial and industrial sector for over twenty-two years and currently works at Dow Chemical in Plaquemine, Louisiana. Mr. Zab started People Building Communities in 2013 as a way to continue his service to his country by mentoring others to succeed in the areas of education, employment, and community service. Octavia Edinburgh. Ms. Edinburgh has worked in the reentry community of Greater New Orleans for twenty-seven years, developing and implementing services and programming for individuals returning to the community after incarceration. She's done this as the director of the Community Service Center meeting. Ms. Edinburgh and her team developed the first HIV/AIDS discharge planning program in the Greater New Orleans area for four former offenders. And the first children of offenders program after her came Katrina to meet the needs of children whose parents were incarcerated or due to case probation and parole. Ms. Edinburgh and her staff lead the agency, have led the agency to an unprecedented reduction in recidivism in the New Orleans area, seeing a seventy-eight percent reduction in individuals who had any infractions with criminal justice system over an eighteen-month period for the last consecutive five years. In addition to her work at the Community Service Center, she is responsible for the Dillard University Social Work Core Courses in Field Experience Linkages for the students and the nonprofit education community. Dr. Raymond Delaney Jr. is with Housing NOA, and we have on the agenda that it's Andrea Morris that would be speaking, but Dr. Delaney is here in Ms. Morris's stead. He has worked in the criminal justice field approximately fifteen years in government, public, and nonprofit organizations. Dr. Delaney is a veteran of the United States Army Reserves. He's an assistant professor of criminal justice at Southern University in New Orleans. Dr. Delaney is the president and CEO of Louisiana Coalition for Offender Resources, a grassroots 501(c)(3) organization. As a member of the New Orleans Reentry Task Force, he is the assistant chair of the steering committee with primary focus on housing for formerly incarcerated persons. Next, Maria Alexander. Maria Alexander currently serves as the Criminal Justice Liaison for Metropolitan Human Services District. The Metropolitan Human Services District is the local governing entity tasked with the service of delivery, no, tasked, tasked with service delivery for persons suffering from mental illness, addictive disorders, and intellectual development disabilities for Orleans, St. Bernard, and Plaquemine parishes. Maria was hired as the program manager for the reentry program at the Orleans Parish Sheriff's Office in 2010 after working for Hope Worldwide, Acorn New Orleans, and the A of L-CIO. As program manager, she created a coalition of employers that were willing to hire ex-offenders. She established working relationships with Job One and the Veterans Administration to assist ex-offenders graduating from the program with job readiness and job placement. In 2012, she was promoted to assistant director of the reentry program, and of course, as I said earlier, she is now with Metropolitan Human Services District. Amanda Walker is the director of clinical services for the Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, known as CADA by many. She received her Master's of Health Science in Rehabilitation Counseling. She is a certified rehabilitation counselor, a licensed addictions counselor, licensed professional counselor supervisor, and a certified clinical supervisor. She has provided individual and group counseling in the areas of family and social concerns, vocational concerns, trauma coping, substance abuse, and mental health to diverse populations. She works as an advocate for criminal justice reform and the rights of LGBTQ clients. So, quite a crew. So thank you all for being here today. I know each of you has your presentation, and we will listen to each of the presentations, and then we'll open for discussion. And of course, I know discussions can break out, I'll do it anyway. Right, Mr. Logan, why don't we start with you?
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmember. My name is Jason Logan. I am the major services manager for the City of New Orleans. My job is to work with providers and stakeholders throughout the parish to improve the outcomes of brothers and sisters returning home and those impacted by the criminal justice system. So to start, we need to address some realities. One in twenty-six Louisiana residents are currently justice involved. That's enough people to fill up the Superdome, the Smoothie King Center, and Tiger Stadium all at the same time. The state releases approximately fifteen thousand people a year, and now five thousand of them return back to the Greater New Orleans area. The long-standing approach to address crime in the United States was always to incarcerate all the way out of the problem. That's not a solution, because ninety-five percent of the people that are convicted and incarcerated will come home, and the question is, how do you want them to return? So one in five people that are released will return to prison in a year, and forty-five percent will return to prison in five years. The City of New Orleans has a responsibility to work on improving the outcomes of these former residents to provide successful pathways for them not to receive. So the city's strategy has always been to serve as a collaborator and a convenor of listed social service providers and stakeholders focused on pipeline, partnership, and policy. The city's focus is not on direct services. There are many direct service providers within the parish and region. The best role for the city is willing to link those services together and to provide opportunities for more effective and efficient service. So one of the major issues throughout our state is an unreliable pipeline of those being released from institutions and then reentry back into their communities. The city serves as a triage point and facilitator to improve the connections between the Louisiana Department of Public Safety and Corrections and service providers and stakeholders. As part of NOA for Life, our primary focus is on residents sixteen or thirty-five years old. However, we provide triage services, referral, and connections to anyone in need. Within our work as part of NOA for Life, two hundred and sixty-six people have received services, and a hundred and seventy-six participants are currently employed or in training programs. The one-year rear-rest rate of participants is seven percent. Another common issue with reentry is the need for partnership through collaboration and coordination. Reentry providers have historically been extremely silent and unwilling and unable to work together towards a common goal. Beginning in 2013, we created and facilitated a reentry working group. That group focused on a strategic plan for reentry in Orleans Parish and created deliverables based on the needs of the reentry population. At its height, the working group was made up of over sixty individuals representing forty-five different organizations. In order to provide sustainability, in 2007, the working group was evolved into the New Orleans Reentry Task Force, which I'll discuss in more detail later on. All that work is for nothing if you don't really address the policy barriers and collateral consequences faced by formerly incarcerated people in Orleans Parish. The city is somewhat limited in the policies that it can directly affect, but we did address some of the collateral consequences within our purview. So we banned the box for city employment, and our policy ultimately led to the adoption of a policy for state employment. We also worked behind the scenes to advocate policy changes within government as well as in private industry. We also provide technical assistance to those addressing issues that affect formerly incarcerated people. As mentioned previously, the New Orleans Reentry Task Force was formed in 2017 and serves as a subcommittee of the Sandy Krasnoff Criminal Justice Council, and also serves as the community implementation team for the Louisiana Prisoner Reentry Initiative. These affiliations help ensure long-term sustainability of the work and also give Orleans Parish reentry stakeholders a seat at the table locally and statewide. The mission of the task force is to build community capacity of stakeholders to use best practices and effective and efficient service to the community to improve the quality of life for justice-involved individuals in Orleans Parish. The task force also serves as a way to inform and assist with the justice reinvestment work going on within the state with a focus on New Orleans. The task force is led by steering team. Steering team is made up of diverse subject matter experts and interested parties from around the city. The goal of the steering team members is to be part of other teams related to issues that directly affect formerly incarcerated people and to serve as a representative of the task force at those teams. In addition, those representatives also keep the greater task force abreast of what is going on at those teams. We also have committees of the task force. I serve as the community coordinator for the task force and the representative of the City of New Orleans. The steering team membership is made up of holistic service providers, advocates, stakeholders, and have formerly incarcerated people within the task. The committees of the task force were designed around the major issue areas around reentry in Orleans Parish: housing, education, employment, corrections, legal, women's issues, and first responders. The Women's Issues Committee was created and is necessary because the needs of women coming home and the barriers they face upon return are very unique to the experience of men. One of the major mistakes that's been made over the years is the assumption that a woman's reentry experience is exactly the same as men's, and that the service provided to them can be exactly the same. Another committee that was created to fill the gap was the First Responders Committee. Generally, coalitions and task forces are made of senior-level officials and administrators, and because of this, it tends to be a lack of understanding of the needs and the issues being faced by the people on the ground. And so the First Responders Committee is made up of case managers, outreach staff, peer support specialists, and on-the-ground stakeholders. That committee is led by the city's transition specialist, Keisha Constantine, and provides much-needed focus to the work of the task force. This was highlighted in Orleans Parish's response to the criminal justice reforms releases that began on November 1st. The First Responders Committee created a triage team that was made up of case managers addressing a diverse group of issues to welcome people home to Orleans Parish. Through coordination and collaboration between the task force and probation and parole on these issues, and its innovative administrator, Stephen LaSalle, the triage team was able to see eighty-nine people over four days, connecting them to job assistance, resources, services provided by over thirty service partners. So people were connected to housing, assistance, emergency services, health services, mental health services, and job and education opportunities. The relationship between the triage team and probation and parole continues. Representatives of the triage team are now embedded at probation and parole two times a week on Mondays and Wednesdays to assist people with their reentry needs. As I stated earlier, the city has a responsibility to be active in reentry. The City of New Orleans is uniquely qualified within the parish to consistently commune stakeholders towards collaboration and innovation. Every person's reentry experience is different, and to truly serve those in need, we need a variety of opportunities and options. Stable housing, employment with a living wage, and connections to positive supports consistently improve reentry outcomes. Assisting in the provision of low-income and temporary housing for the reentry community as well as reducing barriers to transportation and employment will go a long way. With the changes in our federal government and their views on reentry, the city is also looking to provide resources for the work, for the work long-term, through direct funding, graded funding, and connections to diverse funding groups. People are going to continue to come home from incarceration. They are our brothers, our sisters, our neighbors, our mothers, our sisters. How are we gonna greet them? Are we gonna set them up for success? Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. That's very much my name, and I'd like to just take a moment to thank the mayor for putting this focus on reentry, for creating this basically infrastructure for reentry services. And I see Judge Calvin Johnson, the director of the mayor's office of Criminal Coordination, and I'd like to thank him for his work on this too. It's just, it's so important, and it's been an area that has been, you know, just not concentrated on for so long now. And I feel like when you talk about a seven percent recidivism rate for a year, then you're talking about the real success here. So I wanted us to talk more about the Louisiana Reinvestment Act work that you all have done, but I think that you could touch on that to Stephen.
Yes, my guest.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead with your presentation. Councilmember Jason Williams is here also with us.
I think there's an updated version.
Is that Alexis?
We can use that if we have to, but updated version maybe.
This is not the updated version.
I have a little flash drive.
You have a flash drive? Is the flash drive used already, David?
Yeah, we can do that. Unless you gave it. Under the same name.
Alexis, do we have copies of this for the other councilpeople?
We did, but I get into the color because I didn't.
They're all actually the same, it's just a couple of different slides. Do they have presentation?
Yes, sir.
Ellen Gray?
Yes, sir.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen LaSalle, the district administrator for the New Orleans Office of Probation and Parole. First, I want to thank you, Councilmember McGidger, for having me here and having the ability to share with folks who we are. You know, historically, when you talk about law enforcement in the City of New Orleans, there's two entities that gain all the focus, it's the Louisiana State Police and the New Orleans Police Department. And so there's a lot of folks that I'm very excited about having the opportunity to, one, let them know who we are, and then let them know the great amount of work that we do on any given day. And I'm gonna try and expedite this information, but it is a lot of information, and I think it's important that folks know that my fifty staff members who are in and out every day, and my clerical support staff are doing an incredible work. Like I said, if you figure the map, six thousand cases and fifty staff, that's a lot of work. So I started it back up, just titled it Investigation Into Probation and Parole. And a basic investigation should compose of six basic questions: who, what, when, where, why, and how. And so we'll just kind of go through those questions: who we are. In the state of Louisiana, we're post-certified law enforcement officers, so we have full arrest authority, just like any other police officer, although we do have the other authority and powers that come to us through the conditions of supervision. Eighty-four percent of our field staff have bachelor degrees or higher, and that's gonna be a statewide figure. Many have prior military or law enforcement experience. You must pass a physical assessment and a psychological assessment, pass a criminal background check. We do an annual recertification in our firearms and defensive tactics, as well as we are first-aid and CPR trained. And many of my agents extend their training and go to other classes, and I believe we actually have some folks that might even be EMTs as well. We do triennial training in firearms and defensive tactics, so we're very well-trained. We do scenario-based tactical training, which is we put folks, we put on all our protective gear, and we use a sim gun, which is like a paintball, but it's smaller and faster, so it hurts a little bit more. If I use a gun paintball, you know you don't want to get struck. But it puts us in those situations that are high-stress, and the more you do that, the more you become inoculated to that stress so that you can respond in an appropriate manner. And so that's part of the training that we do. And motivational interviewing is a piece where we sit with folks and we begin to train agents on how do I get this individual to understand where their situation is, get them to buy into where they are, and then how do you get them to kind of lead themselves into a better situation, and you kind of guide that conversation. We supervise statewide almost seventy thousand adult convicted felonies. It's an average of a hundred and fifty-one folks per agent. That number's not really telling, because as you can see on the bottom of this slide, we have specific sex offender officers, specialty courts, drug courts, Veterans Court, Mental Health Court, and those officers have a little bit reduced number of cases because of the extra work that goes into those cases, so that causes the other agents that, of course, carry more. We're responsible for conducting all the administrative duties from processing to maintaining all the case files. We perform residence checks, employment verifications, we do drug testing, we refer folks to treatment and services, we transport offenders to court hearings, we make felony arrests, and we also do searches and warrant searches. In 2017, the agents in my office prepared over two hundred and twenty-five major investigations, and those are pre-sentence investigations, pre-paroles, and clemencies. The pre-sentence is an investigation that the judge would order, which would give them an in-depth look into the individual that's about to be sentenced, a social history, criminal history, their thoughts and actions on what led to the crime. We meet with the victims. We give that victim a voice. If the victim doesn't want to speak at a sentencing hearing, that report will allow that victim to have that voice, and that's very important. Pre-parole is a major investigation that goes to the parole board to make a determination should this individual be released early on that parole day. An inclemency will also go to the governor. Will we, is a commutation a sentence? If he's got a life sentence, has this person done the things they need to that maybe that sentence would be overturned and be reduced? And so those are very important investigations, which are very lengthy and take a lot of time. We develop and use evidence-based practices with specialized caseloads, and as I said, we have the sex offender-specific caseload. We have a couple of officers that handle just those, do the complexities and the change in legislation, which is almost always to manage and keep up with those. We look at gang members or strategic threat group members, again, specialty courts and grant programs. We currently have four agents that are doing a co-occurring grant, which is substance abuse and mental health disorders combined, so it really enhances the need for time and resources. We use a performance grid with administrative sanctions to address technical violations, which ensures swift, uncertain, and appropriate sanctions, which may include short-term jail stays in lieu of long-term revocation. Kind of like putting your child in timeout instead of kicking him out of the house, if you would put it a practical measure. Agents utilize the day reporting center at Orleans Parish Sheriff's Office, which has been a huge resource for us. Individuals get programs and services which assist them in successful completion of supervision at that location. We use the motivational interviewing, as I described earlier. We work closely with numerous treatment service providers, and we'll talk about, just a little bit more, about the triage program and the New Orleans Reentry Task Force. But these, all these entities, my partners who are at the table, some and many others out there, they help us to give these individuals the tools needed to be successful, not only in supervision, but in life. Agents are tasked with keeping up with the many needs of the homeless population, which is ever-increasing in our city, and those in need of advanced mental health treatment. We're also, women public safety is a priority. We're a big team player there. We have an agent assigned to the U.S. Marshals Fugitive Recovery Task Force, and have an agent full-time assigned to a DDA task force. We have agents that are part of the Louisiana Human Trafficking Task Force. We have agents that are Louisiana Fusion Center and Criminal Intelligence Center agents, and for those things, where there's a bulletin that goes out, or a robbery or something, they'll send out pictures. Quite often, we can recognize these folks and help solve some of these crimes. During emergency operations, and a lot of folks don't know, we do these things. We assist with evacuating prisons, security of prisoners at institutions and hospitals. We do security at food stamp or D-Snap sites. We assist with contraflow. We handle the security at sex offender shelters, and we assist with routine patrols for local agencies, most recently the tornado that touched down in New Orleans East. We had eighteen folks go. We had nine two-man cars that basically took over most of the patrol while New Orleans Police Seventh District officers were able to focus to go door-to-door searches and assist folks, and that was a big measure that we did. Each year, Department of Corrections releases between fifteen and seventeen thousand offenders. Unfortunately, we also take in about that same amount. Within five years, forty-five percent of those folks return. Those are one of the issues. The title of this slide is "Where Are The Issues?" Often offenders do not receive the programming while inside to assist them with successful reentry. Probation and parole does not have the staff to supervise cases as we would like. People coming through the system have needs that often require more time and more resources than are available. More issues, the top criminogenic needs or areas where folks are lacking is housing, substance abuse issues, mental health, education, employment, transportation is a huge issue, legal issues, and peer support. Historically, there's been a disconnect between providers and probation and parole. And then we have technology issues that we need assistance with. Some systems are not even automated, most systems are very dated, and none of them communicate with each other, so when we're trying to get information back and forth, it's very difficult to do so. The why. The mission of correction services is to enhance public safety through a safe and secure incarceration of offenders, effective probation and parole supervision, and proven rehabilitative strategies that successfully reintegrate offenders into society, as well as to assist individuals and communities victimized by crime. That's the mission statement for the Department of Public Safety and Corrections. We also have a reentry mission statement, which I'm actually just not gonna read for the sake of time. A good mission statement should tell what you do and why you do it, and for my agents, we try to break it down into a more simple method just so they can understand, and we want everybody to understand, this is what we're trying to do in the Department of Public Safety and Corrections. We're about building better lives, not bigger prisons. And so everything we're doing is for that top part. And whose life gets better? The individual's life gets better, their family life gets better, which means their community life gets better, which means our city gets better and our state gets better. So everyone wins when we can build one better life. How do we do that? Through Justice Reinvestment Initiative is one method, and also through the Louisiana Prisoner Reentry Initiative. The Justice Reinvestment Initiative was a package of legislative bills that were passed into law in the last regular legislative session. We were mostly affected by Acts 220, 221, and primarily Act 280. That legislation has now allowed for more credits when serving times the folks come home earlier. It allows for credits for time on the street while on supervision. For some reason, at some point, that person would violate their supervision, and they do get revoked, they get time for that they did well on the street. So we reward good behavior, unfortunately, sometimes we have to punish the bad behavior. It allows credit for time on probation as well, which is new, and it allows for a maximum of three years probation, which we're excited about, because usually within three years, we can tell who's gonna make it, who's not. If we have to extend it, we do it things we can, but this does not drag on supervision for folks who are already performing well. It allows for early closure of cases at the halfway point, but there are no violations to that date, both probation and parole. Historically, we have never been able to close supervision on parole early and reward those who are doing really well, and now we can do so. It changed the maximum number of days on technical revocations from sixty, ninety, and a hundred and twenty to fifteen, thirty, and forty-five. Only when going to treatment programs can a technical revocation be ninety days, and of course, it's just punishing. And it allows for a maximum of three years probation, which we're excited about, because usually within three years, we can tell who's gonna make it, who's not. If we have to extend it, we do it, things we can. But this does not drag on supervision for folks who are already performing well. It allows for early closure of cases at the halfway point, but there are no violations to that date, both probation and parole. Historically, we have never been able to close supervision on parole early and reward those who are doing really well, and now we can do so. It changed the maximum number of days on technical revocations from 60, 90, and 120 to 15, 30, and 45. Only when going to treatment programs can a technical revocation be 90 days. And of course, it's just punishing people longer and harder does not work, because at some point, you get immune to the punishment. And similar to our scenario-based training, we get immune to that stress of being in that high-stress situation, they get immune to the punishment. To some point, it doesn't matter anymore, and then, you know, making the wrong decisions just continues. And of course, we wanna disrupt that cycle and make that different. It changes the detainer policy for parole cases involving certain crimes. It allows for more people to actually continue on supervision, instead of being held in a prison just while they're waiting for their revocation hearing, those new charges can be waited, be heard. And so that's a big change as well, because historically, if you got a new charge, it was an automatic call, and you just sat for a long time sometimes. On November 1st, and I'll just kinda reiterate what James said. First of all, I wanna say my department was very aggressive in what we did. The department got with the transition specialists, which is kinda the liaison between the prisons and the department and with us, and they actually met with all those who were gonna qualify to come home early. And they did data forms on them and got them sent to our individual districts. That allowed us to have my support staff work extra, and they set up a file folder, and we did 85% of the intake processing paperwork and everything was set up and ready for those folks to come home. In doing that, James also and the other folks from the Triage Team, we worked three or four ways of trying, how we're gonna get these folks the things that we need. We had 121 people come through our office in the first four days of those releases. That's about the same amount that we would have released in a month, normally. 74% of those folks got connected to services before they left the building. We had folks who were sitting down with someone from the food stamp office, who was able to put benefits on that card. And so a gentleman getting on a bus, getting sent home, 12 hours later was walking out of our office and able to go and feed himself. And that is a game changer, because otherwise, we know that methods that, they would tank to feed himself outside of that. Homeless individuals, we had 12 individuals that were released that were homeless, had nowhere to go. 10 of those, we had obtained housing, and eight with full-time jobs within 30 days. And that is huge. Remarkably, it's nothing short of a miracle, and my partners who are sitting in this room were a huge part in that. We don't have, probation pro have the time to make that happen. So the collaboration of these partners that we have, that everybody get in on board, you know, a lot of hands make the load right. So together, we'd be extremely successful, whereas James said, the story will all kinda separate, but we're all in one team, one mission, and we're getting, and we're making it happen. We're making it happen. The next step, we have the Triage Team on-site two days a week, and tomorrow we have a meeting, and I'm gonna explain that we need that three days a week, and we'll figure out how to make that happen.[768.79][768.79](Laughter) But referrals are instant, so they're literally feet away. My agent goes into a room and completes our processing for probation and parole and the things we need, and we walk 10 feet and pass them off to a table where I have someone in the Triage Team that does the assessment and immediately links them to services. The reentry docket days, and we're looking at setting this up every month, but that may change, because we're just at the very beginning stages. On Friday, January 26th, again, folks with the team, got with some judges, public defender's office, city attorney, and we met at municipal court. We had 10 offenders who were released who had outstanding attachments or warrants that they got while they were incarcerated, through no fault of their own, and they didn't get rid of it. And so now they have attachments that it wasn't their fault they weren't there, we had. So we began that conversation on how do we help them with this? How to at least get those attachments taken off when they were incarcerated? We met at the court, working together. We only were able to do six of the individuals, because we actually came across 42 dockets on these six individuals. And once we cleared those issues up, two of those folks actually, once we resolved whole traffic issues, we did Officer Motor Vehicle reinstatement letters. Now, two of the six guys were able to go and get driver's licenses without paying hundreds of dollars of fines and fees, when they've paid their debt. And basically, we helped them wipe that clean so they can get a fresh start. The Louisiana Prisoner Reentry Initiative, and this is probably, most folks in the room don't know what we're talking about here, this is really new, to the public, it's old times. It started with three main workgroups, almost about three years ago, consisting of Department of Public Safety prisoners, folks from the prisons, wardens, medical staff, those folks, people from the parole board, and folks from probation and parole. Not only were we all in the same room at the same time, but then these three tables were broken up into corrections, transitional, and community corrections. And I actually was fortunate enough to be placed at the corrections table. A lifelong probation guy knows nothing about corrections, but it worked out great, because I'm able to ask the hard questions of, why do we do this? And then set out, well, if you guys can do these things while you have them, then this will help me be that much more successful on the backside. We resolved a lot of issues. Never before had both sides of the wall been talking to each other. And now, where we're talking, we're at the same table and resolving issues. We have regular meetings for the Louisiana Prisoner Reentry Initiative at the statewide implementation steering team, and James had talked about the, at the local level, we have a steering team, and then there's a statewide steering team that helps oversee that as well. The Louisiana Prisoner Reentry Initiative basically consists of four phases. The first three phases will be shown in the next slide, and they are the getting ready, going home, and staying home. At the getting ready phase, and this is kind of a shortened version of all what we're gonna try and do, but basically, at the point that an individual gets incarcerated, we're gonna do an assessment on those folks, and I'll talk about the Tiger in a minute, because that's an assessment that we've built. But they will get the assessments done that they need, we'll figure out the programming that they need, and then we'll put them in that program at the onset of supervision. One of the things we learned in the Prisoner Reentry Initiative, because a lot of programs were set by the projected release date, which was always a variable. And so sometimes, these folks would partially do programs but not complete them, kinda like giving a bike with no wheels. You really couldn't do a whole lot with what you learned. So this way, folks can complete the program. Actually, instead of getting good time credits, for example, a guy who can weld goes in and takes welding classes, which we qualify for a lot of good time credits, he won't get welding classes, because we know he don't need them. He'll get the life skills classes and job readiness skill classes. And completing a portion of those classes, they'll receive good time credits. So he's gonna get the programming that he needs. And that programming will also follow him as they're released. So that, that's it. So they complete all the programming that's needed, we'll continue to work that plan inside and out. As part of the parole board, again, we can see what program he completed. As part of conditions of parole, instead of giving a generic list of, here's some conditions that they should do, we can actually give individual-specific programming that will help them be successful. Of course, as we're doing our supervision, we're gonna be working with our community partners, and as that individual completes supervision, if they've not completed programming, we now have partners that can still help them complete that, even though now they're on supervision. And so the fourth phase of that, again, will be handing them off to our community partners. Louisiana Prisoner Reentry Initiative, we've developed collaboration with the New Orleans Reentry Task Force at the local level. The Tiger is our risk-needs-responsibility tool. It stands for Targeted Intervention Gaining Enhanced Reentry. This was built largely in part with a joint project with the LSU computer team and also the sociology department. We currently use the LARNA, which is the Louisiana Risk Needs Assessment, and we determined that that LARNA was roughly about 62% accurate. This Tiger tool is gonna be about 80% accurate when it comes to the risk. Also, the need side of that, not only will we be able to figure out what those needs are, but it'll spit out a prescription bundle that say, here's the program that meets those needs. And now, we're not just shooting at this line, we can actually accurately help folks with the things that will help them the most, and also reduce recidivism. The pipeline data is one of the slides that James showed, showing the actual realities of who's inside and where they're from. The long-term of that pipeline data will also tell us who's coming home and what are their needs, so that we can better structure our resources and where, put the funding for our resources, what's needed the most for those folks who have gone from Orleans into the system, now they're coming back, and what are the things that we can put in place to help them be the most successful. The REEP is the reentry accountability plan that we've talked about. And then we utilize the local reentry center, which is housed at Plaquemines Parish. We have actually started this, last month in December, we put the first cohort into St. Tammany Parish. We identify folks by using the Tiger. We find moderate to high-risk folks, who are all gonna be able to get in and go out at the same time, so they go in as a group, so they can work with each other and help hold each other accountable through the programming and through the program. While they're in that 90 days in that reentry center, that puts them close to home, so there's a reunification with family and close social support. And most importantly for us is it also puts our community partners close enough that they can do an in-reach and begin to set those folks up and do pre-enrollment of programs, so that there's a seamless reentry, that then when they step out the door, they're already set up, ready to go to programming to complete the things they need. And that's just incredibly huge that we could pull it off. We're setting up in March, we're scheduled to do the cohorts here for the Orleans, folks from Orleans Parish, and again, they'll be with Plaquemines Parish. So how do we truly measure success? I'll just share with you, in corrections, as I've seen it over all the years, the measurement of success is simply as this: we measure our failures. Then we wait a while, and we measure our failures again. And if they're reduced, we call that a success. And while it is, and I agree with that, I challenge folks to understand, success is really something different. We can neither qualitatively nor quantitatively measure the true success of one individual. When that one individual gets run, and they understand what's going on, and they get the tools they need, but then they can teach those around them, again, as they get their family, and so their sons and daughters don't come into the system, their neighbors don't come into the system, their grandchildren don't come into the system. We can't measure that success, because they never come into the failure side of the equation. And so that's true success, and that's what we're aiming for. Thank you.[1237.49][1237.49](Laughter)
Thank you, Stephen. I wanted to clap.[1244.83][1244.83](Laughter) Just really, incredible to hear about. And my first question that pops to mind is, is how was it before, when a person got out of prison? What did they have? What happened? It's my last day, I walk out, what do I have with me? Where am I going?
Typically, you would be released from the Department of Corrections with any documentation, if you had an ID or something that you obtained while you were there. A bus ticket and a few little property, you know, your own personal little property. You would show up at our office, you'd get processed. We wouldn't have a Triage Team on-site. I would have to rely on the agent to try and make a determination of what needs there may be. Primarily, the intake officer is not necessarily gonna be the assigned case officer, so really we have to then kick in another step and wait for that assigned case officer to meet with the individual, let them figure it out, and then hopefully, we can find one of the many programs that are available, and we would make referrals. It becomes a place that there's so many programs, you don't know what to do, and there's a thing called the Higgs Law. You have too many decisions, you really don't make any decision, which is the worst decision. So this Triage Team is just, it's a godsend, really, that we have these folks who are trained, and, you know, we do social work, but we're not social workers. We do law enforcement, but we're not the police. We're quasi of these agencies. So now, we can partner with those who are the professionals, who do that work the best, better than anyone, and we're hand-in-hand with them. So previously, we may get a very small percentage of folks actually tied to resources. Now, I don't know what the numbers are exactly, but it's gonna be, I would probably say, remaining in that 70% factor. We're still new, we just started in December and January, having those folks within our office every two days a week. So at the end of this month, we'll compile numbers and see where I, but I know it's gonna be tremendously better. And we've also seen a lot less folks returning statewide with the Justice Reinvestment. We're still well below the numbers before November 1st, as far as folks coming back into the system. We're still well below those numbers.
That's fantastic. When you say the Justice Reinvestment Act, oh, okay. And when you say the Justice Reinvestment Act, could you explain a little bit more about what that is in terms of people coming out of prison, and how long is that gonna be happening?
Well, it's from here forward. A lot of folks, I think, got freaked out, thinking we were releasing people that shouldn't have been released. The truth of the matter is, it really, for the most part, it was a time computation that they allowed more credit for more time. So as you compose that up and you knew it, you realize there's a lot of folks that they need to go now, because they have the time. So some folks may have been a few days, some a few weeks, maybe some a few months. It's possible maybe even a couple came home early a few years. But these folks were coming home, as James said. 95% of these folks are coming home. They're our folks, they're our friends, they're our neighbors, they're coming back home to us. And so it's important that we do the right thing while we have them, and then when they come out, then they get to us, and then, again, passing them off to our partners even once they complete supervision, just working together to do, it's, my goal is that it's the advantage, this is gonna sound crazy, it's the advantage for the person who ends up getting placed on probation and parole, because when we finish with them, they have a better chance of success than what we're doing outside of the system. Now, shame on us as a society if we're not getting that done, but that's my goal, and I think it's a great goal, but I hope it's never achieved, that we outdo what can be done before they even get to us. We wanna eliminate that as well.
Very good. I have time to number Louisiana's.
I know there are a number of other partners who are gonna speak as well, so I just wanna say to James and Stephen, anecdotally, I've had the opportunity to meet with someone who is re入 society, and they describe the services that exist now as the first time in their life, that someone was actively involved in getting into wraparound services to be successful. And I know for probation and parole, some folks might say it's more work, but if we really start talking about how we're defining success, it's when someone has paid their debt to society, that's it. Now they're moving on, and they're productive members of society. So what you guys are doing and what your other partners in the room are doing, is really setting them up for failure, which starts improving our community as a whole. It's amazing to see change in criminal justice. I think it's the first time that we really have a criminal justice system. Because system means that the different components are working well together to be successful, and that's what we're talking about. Can't say enough about it. I hope one day you all get streets named after you, because this is that interview that the folks is from their legacy.
Very good, and we've got quite a number more who are all part of this work. Next is Octavia Edinburgh.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to hear from all of us in our, I'm Octavia Edinburgh, and I'm the Executive Director of the Community Service Center. The Community Service Center is probably older than anyone in this room, except me. Our agency was established in 1965 to meet the needs of people who were returning home from a quest of...
We have, we have John. I know.[1606.66][1606.66](Laughter) I was waiting for the end.
Well, I wasn't gonna say anything, but he was an original born...[1615.11][1615.11](Laughter) See, I wasn't gonna say anything. Our agency was established to rebuild lives, families, and communities. In 1965, this nonprofit was established with the mission of reducing recidivism in the adult ex-offender community and greater involvement in the community. The main goal was to assist offenders to become productive and vital members of their families and their communities. After 46 years on Magazine Street, we relocated to Gentilly, and that's been an interesting transition for all of us. CFC is the original service provider for offenders, and has been supported through many funding streams through its lifespan. It's been an agency that has stayed small, some by choice, some by design. And we provided services that were holistic. We provided services in counseling, case management, emergency assistance, limited rent and utility assistance, identification and travel assistance, employment readiness, soft skills, employment facilitation, support groups, HIV AIDS services for those who are returning home, family reunification, services for homeless, and potentially homeless offenders. Programming for children of our clients. One of the things that we have attempted to do is provide that holistic piece of servicing that people need. We know that a job is important, but without all of the pieces that they've missed on the front end, the job does not make them whole. For 50 years, we served as a referral source for offenders and their families, a resource base for community organizations, a religious community, and grassroots organizations who were seeking to assist or provide offenders with linkages to enhance their reentry and the lives of their families. Building coalitions for us has always been a mainstay. We've had to work with other agencies and partner with agencies in our city and our state, our local community, our faith-based community, in order to be able to provide what our clients have needed. People come to us through the grapevine. They're generally not court-ordered to us, other than Judge Duss. They're not court-ordered to us. And so when they come, they come with an... And so when they come, they come with an expectation. They come with a desire to have a different outcome. And so our work in the community is vital as far as partnering. And that's why this, the people at this table have become so important to the work. In 2016, '17 fiscal year, we serviced approximately 280 individuals. And our outcomes were that 100% of those folks were crime-free. They had not been back to court, they had not violated their court obligations. They were successfully going through whatever steps they needed to for their reentry. And that's the important thing about, I think, about success is that each person has a different path that they need to take. Whether they have a family or they need education, they each have a different path. And so we're always looking at what is the path. We have case managers who help them to create case plans and case activities and action plans and work with others in the community in order to meet those needs. What's in the CSC's future? While we'll always service ex-offenders and their families, that's always going to be our work. The focus is narrowing to accommodate the female offender. One of the things that has happened is, when I arrived at the agency in nineteen... There were only two or three... I'm very proud to say in 1984. There were very few women that we serviced. I think my caseload might have had two women in it. But now that has changed. We're seeing more women, younger women, women with children who need lots of services if they're to be whole and their children are to be whole and their communities are to be whole. So our work is narrowing now to really focusing on those women and their children and the reentry and the success of those families to bring some wholeness to them. Women become a part of the criminal justice system for lots of reasons. But one thing that we find is that it has a lot to do with poverty, which leads to the drugs, which leads to some other negative behaviors. And so we recognize that we don't address those criminal behaviors in the same way that we do with men. Women have, they leave children behind, they leave homes behind, they leave a lot of things behind. That's the first thing that they're thinking about when they're released. I've got to get my children, I've got to get, you know, I got to get a house, I got to get my children. I got to get back on my feet, my children I depended on. And so one of the things that we're doing is trying to work with them so that this reentry process is beneficial to not only them, but to their children and to their families. Case management, excuse me, the case management team and volunteers work daily to support women as they're coming home, providing enhanced services, resources, stabilization opportunities, while trying to educate the community about the struggles that they face and the needs that they have and the impact that incarceration has had on their children. So we'll be targeting women. That's going to be our main focus in the future. And our objective is to reduce recidivism within that lotus population. It's to increase the linkage services that they need. It's to increase the linkage and knowledge base of the women that we serve. As related to their personal health, one of the things that we find is that many of these women have real health issues that have not been addressed, including mental health, but physical health. We're finding many of our women are getting diagnosis of breast cancer and cervical cancer after they get home. So that's a whole other barrier that they're facing. And we want to link them with at least one community activity as a volunteer. We think it's really important that people know that everything that everybody does is not for free. People do things to enhance their community and their family by just giving. And so we're working at, you know, encouraging them to give, to do, because that is what makes you a full partner in the community. So how can you help? Well, you know, nonprofits always need money. We always, we're always broke, so anybody can help with money. But we always look for volunteers. People to offer an hour of their time to a transitioning woman, just to have a cup of coffee, have a coffee. Sometimes they've never had that, just a one-on-one with somebody, is just listening and not punishing. So that's important to us. Transportation is a major issue. Public transportation is expensive. And many times to work, they have to go outside the parish. So they need transportation for two entities, Orleans and Jefferson. Gift cards for a meal or toiletries. One of the things that you ask councilwoman is what do people leave with? And many times when women come, and men too, they have nothing. And so toothbrushes and just personal items. Just a burpkin gift card makes a difference sometimes. It's very interesting, the small things that are important. We're collecting welcome home bags for essential personal items. And the Johnson &amp; Johnson Fashion Fair Company has provided us with gift bags, welcome home gift bags for women. Irish Channel Ministries, Women Ministries has given us bags for women. And it's just little bags with all kinds of little toiletries and cute little things that we don't even think about because we go in our purse and we pull it out. But they do, chapstick and those kinds of things. And we're always looking for people who want to volunteer technical skills to enhance the service delivery of our agency. You can contact us, email, you can call us at this number, 504-897-6277. And you can always remember our women as you think about people who need help in some way. Thank you.
Thank you, Octavia. And at the pre-reading, I may have asked you about this, but do you have any work inside the jail?
We're going into OPP to do some group sessions. But pre-Katrina, we did pre-releases of all of the prisons. And we are working on doing a pre-release with LCIW, the Louisiana Correctional Institution, where we'll meet with women in the sixty days, forty-five to sixty days before their release, so that we can assess what they need and where they're going to be when they release.
That's great, that's great. I was at the hearing yesterday morning, the update hearing for the OPSO consent decree. And the judge mentioned that he had gone unannounced to the jail on a few occasions. One of those occasions, he went to the women's area. And it was just the plural in terms of the essential items they did not have. And so I think that's, you know, something I'd like to focus on is how we can get these amenities to the women in the jail, too. And then you can take care of it when they get out. Women with Vision is an organization that historically has gone into the jail and helped with women. So I was trying to get them hooked up with Director Maynard. And now we'll have to take a step back there and see if I can get them hooked up with, I think it's a doctor or Mr. Hodges. But anyway, that's wonderful. And we really do need organizations that concentrate on the women who are going through the criminal justice system and then trying to reenter because, I mean, so many times, so often, they, not only do they not have jobs or housing, like the case with the men, but they also have children to either take care of or to try and get back with them. Thank you.
I would just say that that's a specificity, it's something that the number of female prison populations is growing. But the number of services has not. And I think, as always, the general public lags behind in its understanding of what's really going on. So you hit the nail on the head. We can clone you.
All right, and next Maria Alexander is going to talk to us about Metropolitan Human Services District and the good work that they're doing.
Good afternoon. Just want to thank you. I also want to thank the task force for this opportunity to come together as a community because a lot of us have been doing this, we've been doing this for years in our little silos. You know, we're doing hard work, fast work, but not work together. And James Holden and Keisha put together this opportunity for us to just go forth and just make something different in New Orleans. And we have a different feeling, a different vibe, and a different commitment. The city is turning 300 years old, but this right here, this is going to be different from 300 years. But we're changing how we think about our city. We are changing how we think about our citizens. We're changing how we think about our future. But that's it. I want to talk about Metropolitan Human Service District. Metropolitan Human Service District was created by the Louisiana Legislature in 2003, excuse me. MHD meets the, to meet the behavioral health needs of residents of Orleans, Platteville, and San Bernard Parish. The mental health, addiction, and developmental disabilities are provided in our five clinics. We have five clinics which are located in Algeiers, where everybody knows the Central City, by the Chicken Market, of course. Some of these fields who are in San Bernard Parish. We serve all ages, from the beginning to the end, from residents, individuals with Medicaid eligibility, and you put on my glasses, and the uninsured. And that is the biggest portion of our population, the uninsured persons who are mentally ill. That is a, I don't want to get emotional about it, but that is a focus of our district. So that we can make sure that anybody who is unable to take it themselves mentally has a safe place, has a safe haven, and know that Metropolitan is there for them. We're definitely going to be servicing anybody who has mental health issues. But the homeless and the persons who are incarcerated are one of our biggest focuses, one of our biggest priorities and populations. What services do we provide to adults? Assessments and referral, crisis intervention, peer support, medication management, individual and group therapy for substance use, addiction therapy, HIV, TB, pregnancy and urine testing, specialized opioid treatments. We also serve the youth. That's another part of our population that we need to focus on. If a person is not able to sit still in class, he's not going to be able to learn. So it's very important that we are able to reach out to children while they're still in school to be able to assess where they are and to determine what benefits and what treatment that they need so that they can become productive citizens and that they won't fall into the criminal justice system. We also have intellectual and developmental disability services to deal with people who have issues that are not necessarily able to do habits in the classroom or that are active hours in the classroom, but we are able to help them to make sure that their needs are met as well. Metropolitan Human Resource Coordination, just like everybody else, everybody comes into the clinic and it's a holistic approach. We're not going to be able to help a person if we can't get the person to the appointment. We're not going to be able to help the person if the person feels like they can't come because they don't have transportation, they don't have the right clothing. So we have partnerships with different groups throughout the city, as well as the task force, to make sure that all needs are met. This is how we, how you access Metropolitan. Basically, we have one point of entry, two points of entry. One is Central City and the other is a clinic across the river in Algeiers. Basically, you call 568-3130. You make that phone call and we're going to be able to put you in contact with whoever you need to help you with the services that you are acquiring. One thing that's important, it's not necessarily on the schedule, I mean, it's not on our list yet, is our reentry program. Basically, what we're doing now, we're working with the Orleans Parish Sheriff's Office. We've been given the unique opportunity to go in to meet prisoners while they're still in jail, while they're part of their discharge planning process. We're able to introduce Metropolitan services to them while they are incarcerated. The goal of this is to create a seamless transition from prison to freedom. Because what happens a lot of times, if a person was incarcerated for five, six, seven years and they've been receiving medication, they have become calm, they've become focused, they have been able to finish their GED, they are understanding that who they are is not necessarily out of control anymore. I understand who I am because I've been able to be in therapy, I've been able to receive services. But I've noticed in some of the groups is that we have a tremendous amount of fear with the guys because they have become joyful at the prospect of becoming released from jail and fearful at the prospect of becoming released from jail. Because at this point in time, I'm realizing that I have been calm, I've been collected, I've been focused. I know who I am right now, and I'm going to be out. And I may not be able to get the same type of services that I receive while I'm incarcerated. Metropolitan recognizes that and we understand that in order for a person to have a successful reentry into society, they have to have an appointment. They have to be able to be fearless in their attempt to continue to be whole. So what we do, we try to make sure that their medical records are sent to Metropolitan prior to their release. We know for a fact that that gives a certain amount of stability. We also make sure that that person knows that when you are released, you have an appointment and that I have already come and talked to you, I explained Metropolitan to you and you know that you have a safe haven. You have a place that where you will not feel stigmatized by the fact that you are formerly incarcerated and you are not stigmatized by the fact that you may have a medical illness or substance use problem. So basically, this task force has given us an opportunity to help people in a way that we've never been able to do before. And we're just grateful for that opportunity to work with the task force and to explain our program to you this afternoon.
That's excellent. And so how many, you know, reentering individuals do you all have the opportunity to service in a given month?
It depends. Right now, it depends. Because what we have at Metropolitan, also, we have a walk-in opportunity. And we explain to the guys that you may have an appointment on the 15th of February, but if you feel like you're becoming anxious or upset about something, just walk into the clinic. Because we do have walk-in services at Metropolitan so that a person doesn't ever have to feel that they are alone, that they have to wait for an appointment.
Very good. And do you have another page or you'd like to show us your hours?
Hours are eight to four thirty, eight to four thirty, okay.
Thank you for your work. Have you found that the task force and this sort of coordination and collaboration has helped to reduce the stigma of mental illness and how it factors into criminal justice system? I know a lot of times for the former five...
A lot of times, for the former clients or this reading about this topic, folks, whether it's bipolar or whatever the issue, they don't wanna accept that condition, they don't wanna use that medication or they use, they try to come up with their own cocktails to help them get by. And then that gets them in trouble because they're just trying to get to normal, whatever that baseline is. Do you find that having all these services lined up like this is helping folks realize that you are normal, whatever that condition is you may have? Is that helping with the stigma at all?
It's been a tremendous, what has happened is, a lot of people come into the room, and it's a room like this, and the partners are everywhere, and a lot of people will come in and will not self-identify as a person who has had a mental health issue. So what happens is, and it has happened, I think, at least ten times since we've started, easily, that they may not self-identify when they come into the room, but I'll get a phone call. I'll get, a person will come into the clinic and they'll say, "I've just been recently released." What we've done at Metropolitan, and basically, to let everybody know, if a person walks into Metropolitan and says, "I've been formerly incarcerated, I've been recently released," they immediately, we go into priority mode because we are considering them a priority population. Because a lot of times, persons are released from jail with five days of medication or thirty days of medication. So in that timeframe, we have pretty much a two-week opportunity or window to make sure that they're
Yeah, before they get out.
Yes, we have to get them in. So our staff has been trying to realize that if a person says, "I need an aftercare appointment" or "I need the appointment because I've just been released," we immediately give them an appointment, if not that day, the next day. No one is going to be able to say that they were feeling unsafe and no one was there for them. Because Metropolitan has made an effort to do this. And with this particular task force, even if I'm not there for whatever reason, and a person comes in, I'll get information from Keisha, and she says, "This guy came in, he had a behavioral health issue. Could you get in touch with him?" Do we get in touch with him that day or the next day?
That's great. It really sounds like a new policy, no closed doors, perhaps several open ones, the difference. Different ways to get back on track.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Maria. Next, we have Amanda Walker, and she is with CADA, Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, Greater New Orleans.
And there's another mic there, that's easy. Hello? Hi. I wanna piggyback on everybody else saying thank you for letting us come here and present the information that we all have. And we do really work hard as a team, and it's been an incredible experience, especially over the past couple of years, to watch the task force grow and to watch all the agencies come together and just become this one kind of loving, happy family. So yeah, so I'm with CADA. CADA is the Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, but we are usually just called CADA. Our mission is to empower community members to build a safe and healthy future through prevention, treatment, and recovery support services that foster resilience and longevity. We vision thriving greater New Orleans area in which every person feels their potential free from the impact of addiction. We have some very core values that we really stand by, Dana, and that is that we welcome the diversity of people and ideas, and we treat others with respect and dignity. We have empathy and compassion for all members of the community. We are committed to serving those who need help. We work to create community awareness around addiction and mental health. That we are reliable and that we are responsive and that we follow through with our priorities. We hold ourselves to the highest ethical standards and conduct ourselves to an integrity. And I think if that's the most important thing is that we really are committed to the population that we serve and that we are, try to be as reliable as possible. And we are committed to fostering resiliency in any of the people that come into our office. So with reentry, CADA has two separate programs, one of which is called Project Transition. And it's not housed here in New Orleans. It's in, actually, in St. Charles Parish in Nelson Coleman Correctional Facility. But we do service in that program at least about twenty to thirty percent of New Orleans residents. They're released back into the community, so we are able to touch on them there. This program is actually done in the jail. It's an eleven-week program. We go over about a hundred hours of curriculum that was provided by the Department of Corrections. And once the individuals complete the program, we do serve only then there partially because that jail houses a small percentage of women, and it's harder for us to get a larger group. We do have funding from the United Way of St. Charles. We have to meet certain numbers, so we're not as able to meet to the needs of women as we are men. But that program, if they complete that program, they get a moderate twenty days off of their sentence, so they're released earlier into the community with skills. One of the biggest things about this program in particular is that we've realized that we're not the experts in everything. CADA is really good at doing substance abuse and handling some other life skills, but we may not be the best at parenting. So this program is a collaboration between five other agencies. And so we picked, basically, the ones who are where they go. You know, so we went to a certain particular program that does parenting. They handle all of our parenting. So we teach the guys anger management, life skills, we do goal setting, character development, substance abuse, personal development. There's about ten models that the guys put through there. And with this program, we've been able to consistently hit about a nine percent assistiveism rate for that program each year. We serve about a hundred people per year with that one. And we do, it used to be really nice, we do a great graduation at the end where families are able to come in and see them. It's a really warm and welcoming ceremony for them. Project Reconnect is our, basically, our outside-the-jail post-release case management services. And we approach case management a little bit differently. We do a very hands-on case management. We have smaller caseloads, which allows our case managers to really be there and involved with the class. So, for example, if we get a call and they say, "Well, I can't make it to my health appointment because I don't have transportation." We will either provide them with the bus passes or we have peer support that will come and pick them up and take them where they need to be. So our whole goal for this program is really to decrease the barriers that someone has to access the treatment. So we wanna keep people in substance abuse treatment so that they can't say, "Oh, well, I couldn't finish treatment because I had all of these other priorities that came up." We're trying to help them access, remove the barriers, and get them to get the treatment so they can obtain a long-term recovery. Federal and private foundation grants support various programs that focus on expanding substance use treatment and related services to anyone who's been sentenced, especially with substance use disorders and co-occurring. That, we access several different funds. We have some state brands, we have some federal brands. We also have some private funding that allows us to continue our reentry services by providing the legal treatment services and recovery to those who are returning to their families and community from incarceration and help the social cause of substance abuse independence to the public or increase and an increase in the safety of the public by reducing substance abuse and related identity violence. So these are some statistics, some of the state statistics that help us, and some of these are programs, that help us meet the need, the reason why we provide the services we do. Thirty percent of the inmates are incarcerated due to drug offenses. So whether that's possession and armed robbery or using weapons. Eighty percent of offenders in Louisiana correctional systems have substance abuse problems that contribute to their criminality. And seventy-five percent have trauma-related disorders. One of the things that we've picked up on in the community, especially in our community, is the need to focus on trauma services. And that's something that's really hard, and a lot of people like to back away from it because you are dealing with some very tough things. But in our experience, what we've learned is that if you don't address some of those problems, then it's kind of, you're missing a huge part of that person and reconnecting their wholeness. For our in-base correctional facility program, eighteen percent of the people that we screen, screen positive for having some form of a substance abuse disorder. About seventeen percent screen positive for mental health disorders. Forty-two percent screen positive for co-occurring disorders. That's both a substance abuse and a mental health disorder. And sixty-seven percent screen positive for trauma symptoms. As Maria said, sometimes it's really hard because we've got a group of guys together and you're all in one room and you're like, "Here's this packet, fill it out." So some of those numbers are probably greater than what they actually are because they don't wanna self-report. So one of the things I wanna talk about today is just kind of some lessons that we've learned from doing these programs for a while. One of the problems that we incur all the time is program retention, and it's just keeping people engaged. We have worked out a couple of different ways to do this. We try to stay really involved, we have peer support, we work with all of our community partners. We, you know, we're just with them through the whole process. Another thing that we kind of have issues with is incorporating evidence-based programs. A lot of programs are made for things that are outside the New Orleans area, and we're very unique here. And so what we've had to learn is how do you tweak these programs with staying into the fidelity of the programs? One of the things that Steve mentioned earlier, I'm trying to remember his words for this now, was the disconnect between social services and criminal justice. That's one of the things that I think we've really honed in on and tried to figure out the best ways to work around is, I think, in mental health and substance abuse, we view the criminal justice agencies to have a different goal than what we have. We're there to help and heal, whereas a lot of the times, they see the criminal justice agencies as someone who's trying to punish. And one of the things that we've learned is that we have the same goal. We really do. And trying to push against working with your criminal justice agencies really just puts you in a hole. And it's hard for the, you know, one of the things that we can do is that when we have a client who comes to us and says, "Well, I haven't seen my probation officer in three months because I can't pay my fees or because I don't have transportation," or other reasons that they may say that they didn't see their probation officer. We encourage them and will actually bring them to the probation office. If we have, like, some donated fund to pay their fees and, you know, if we have something that we provide them with transportation to and from their appointments, we try to make them see that, like, we all have the same goal in mind. We all want to work together because at the end of the day, it's all about getting you to the place that you wanna be. And for us, the biggest thing is just reinforcing, trying to teach our clients that you can move through all of this. It's really hard for our clients to wanna deal with their substance use, their mental health, if they don't have a place to lay their head at night, they don't have a place to sleep, and they don't have those basic needs that we all hold dear. It's really hard for them to put themselves together and to get up and say, "Okay, I need to go to work today, and I need to go and do this, and I gotta go to work." It's really hard to do that if you don't have the basic needs met. And we also, it's not only here, but our big thing is look at a different definition of success. We have traditionally looked at if someone finishes treatment, and they make it through all of these days, and they do all of these things, they go to the AA meetings and they do this, then they're treated, they're here. Not really. But what we look at is, maybe you did make it all the way through, but is that a complete failure? Do I have to give you a thing that says, "You discharged" and all of this stuff? So for us, we try to look at it, you know, kind of like Steve said, looking at what did you do? What are the good things that you've done from this point to this point instead of focusing on what you didn't make it all the way through? We are actually starting some new, really exciting services for us. We're gonna start an intensive outpatient program. We're looking at using some evidence-based programs. It's gonna be intensive, it's three days a week for three hours per session. We also are going to start up a new trauma therapy group that we're gonna try to do two different tracks. We're gonna have one for women and one for formerly incarcerated individuals. And we're also going to do an anger management group that I'm gonna work with Keisha and James to set up where it's gonna be focused just on those who are involved in the criminal justice system. We have some new, exciting venues coming. So here's my contact information. You can reach us at, actually, it's eight two one CADA, the two two three two is CADA. So it's really easy to remember. And we don't turn anyone away, regardless if they're a volunteer PEA, regardless if we have Maria or Maynard, or if you come through our doors, we're gonna give you the service just like anybody else. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. And this is good to learn about CADA, of course. I've been a supporter and fan for quite a few years and have seen how successful your organization is. And the, you know, whole idea of joining forces here is very exciting. And I think it's gonna continue to lead to more great things and expand to help more people who are coming through our justice system. How's the Williams, what's it?
It's amazing work. Truly amazing.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Dr. Villani with housing Noah.
Okay, I wish my students was here to see that I don't have a PowerPoint presentation to me. She's gonna tell us, so that'd be great. I wanna keep you all young, and I won't, we hit a race something that we already know is just obvious. But we also need to recognize that what you see today is a phenomenal work. We all know that the criminal justice system is very fragmented, and the communication processes are very disturbing to where it affects communities and continue to perpetuate the recidivism rates. And so what you see at this table and people that are here and probably not here today, there's a group of folks that are community organizers and motivators and inspirationers that are continually doing this work. I represent Louisiana Coalition for Federal Resources. We are a nonprofit, and we were one of the organizations that kind of started when reentry became a buzzword a couple of years ago, back in twenty ten, around two thousand. Right before James was hired. And LaCorne has made this position and dedicated his services to making sure that even if the administration, for whatever reason, or I hate to say the reality, goes in a different direction, we're still here as a community, and the focus is on helping formerly incarcerated individuals as they materially from prison back to the community, which is very important. A lot of times, people do not understand that the trauma that they experience, it's a horrible place. I've worked there, I worked at Arlington Parish Prison. I was a jailer, I worked in the courts. I ran a halfway house with federal offenders. I actually slept in prison when we had hurricanes to come through. I've slept in prisons when we had community-type oriented prisons. And it is not easy to deal with. The experience that you undergo just as a jailer is just enough to make you never wanna do anything in your life. And it's so easy to get caught up. I've seen so many good people, so many dedicated people lose their lives because they just got caught up in a system that's designed to perpetuate stereotypes. One in every third offender is either dysdiagnosed or duly diagnosed and co-occurring with issues that are not properly addressed because of funding is just not adequately provided or the proper staffing. And the people who can reach these individuals are not there and they're not being trained because of so many other issues that's going on. So one of the elements in the room that we seem to forget, and there are people at this table that raised flags and said, "Hey, there needs to be a place for people to stay when they get out of jail." So we've been working on programs, we've been working on providing soft skills and interpersonal skills. We've been doing family reunification and education. Almost everything that's important towards criminal genetic needs has been fulfilled, but we have yet to really focus on housing. I mean, just me alone, I mean, I'm a working-class citizen, and it is very expensive renting when sixty percent of people in New Orleans are rent-terrors. And the housing crisis is just, you know, continuing to add to the problems that we already have and that we see. In November of 2017, approximately a hundred and ninety-one individuals were released, both men and women, from Department of Corrections to the New Orleans area. Councilmember, one of the things you asked was, what's the difference between now and then? At one point, it was very antiquated, and they would get out of jail with nothing. They were supposed to have in policy a state ID, a social security card, but that's not what we saw. What we saw was, oh, they forgot it at the jail, or the jail did not give them the resources that was already there. Those types of mishaps can continue to perpetuate or add to someone going back to jail because they will lose hope. So, with this initiative that we have with the housing, it's a consortium of different organizations, nonprofits, community organizers, state and local government, and even federal agents as well, are part of this system that we are developing. And we are already in process. We have the First Seventy-Two Plus, we have Core Housing, we have the Addis Institute, we have Sister Heart, and we have Martin and Shannon, who are providing adequate housing with limited funders. We have transportation, but we can't move the vans because we can't afford to move them. We have staff that can adequately address the needs through physios, sociological, and psychological treatment. But it's hard to provide that because these folks are doing volunteer work. Because we just don't have the funding so that we can adequately address the needs of these formerly incarcerated persons. I have great respect for Councilmember Jason because he's out there, I see him, I see you, Susan. But I'm very shocked to see that this room is not filled. And so, accountability is paramount. And that means if we're going to take this serious, that means this room needs to be filled with people who understand and say, you know what? Back in the day of 2016, sixty-three percent of the budget was allocated to criminal justice, public safety, which is important. But how much of those dollars have been allocated to the groups that are sitting here so that we can provide the resources and the necessary personnel? So that when this gentleman, Steve LaSalle, who's a great person, his offices are overwhelmed. Here we are to be that safety net. But we can't be that safety net without having a proper funding so that we can have housing that are appropriate and helpful for self-efficacy. A lot of our people that we see are males and females that don't have the necessary skillset so that they can focus in society or socialize. Employment? That's not hard to get somebody employed. I know because I've helped them. Now, it does take more than thirty days, I try to tell the Federal Bureau of Prisons of that because they will write you up to send you back to jail if you don't have a job within thirty days. So, it's, we can get them access to a job, but at nighttime, at two o'clock in the morning, when there's an event, you know, this is a party city, the bus services is not working. Well, the RTA has committed to changing that. But everybody can't catch the bus at that time of night. We have different types of offenders with special needs. And those special needs have to be met. And in order for us to meet those needs, it's going to take a concerted effort from everybody in this room and outside of this room to make sure that we need to provide housing first. If we provide a job, but they have no stable housing, then what is the purpose? What success is that? So, what we have done was recreated a working group. And that working group have developed a work plan with outcomes to ensure that the deliverables and results are presented to you all. Now, we don't have them right now, but we're working towards that. The first phase is to develop a standardized and replicable housing model that will address two hundred and twenty returning citizens across the city through a scatter. It's not, all houses are not, unfortunately not, you know, in the same location. But it is, some are on transient routes and some are not. And what we're going to do is make sure that we try to implement this model by the second quarter of 2018. And we're developing policies and practices that meets evidence-based and accreditation standards such as CARF. So, they know that we are trying our best to provide a service of quality and equity. The second phase is to conduct an analysis of the temporary housing network and protection, projections of the state prison population to develop housing reentry networks. This will include construction, rehab, and permanent facilities that provide housing and the supportive services necessary for successful reentry and scattered site housing. This will be an ongoing process, but we want you to keep in mind that the way that we develop these programs is very unique because we are inclusive of those who are most affected, which are the persons formerly incarcerated. Typically, we tend to tell them what to do, what's going to happen. Well, they are involved in this process at the table with us, taking the lead and saying, "This is what affect. This is what we need to address, this is how we're going to address it." And so, this is going to be a great opportunity for us to look at each other and kind of have a check and balance and say, "You're not holding up to what we say, you need to get it together, let's get it right." And those outcomes will be presented to the group and also to those other funders who will be sitting finances through the Foundation of Louisiana, who has agreed to be our kind of liaison and make sure that fiscal accountability is there. The third phase is to secure resources, site funding and operating support to launch a reentry network that can replicate in the four parishes, which would be Jefferson, Cato, East Baton Rouge, and St. Tammany. While the one hundred and forty-one transitional house on Broad Street will be temporary, we will be working within the next two to three years to make sure that we have a more permanent solution. Because housing is something that's going to be a part of the reentry process. Well, actually, always have been a part of it. And so, councilmembers, and we appreciate you all. We want you to know that this model that we're developing will be a very structured, organized, programmatic-type cognitive approach. And we will have a facility director that will kind of be a liaison to make sure that case managers and outreach intake is taken care of. And that we are developing programs that are like a pipeline from the court process adjudication all the way through, because reentry starts really when it first, when they first enter into the courthouse, which is very important. And so, people like Judge Contral, magistrate Contral, is already on board, he's aware of these initiatives. So, all we asking is that you all take the time out to really look at how you distribute the finances for public safety. And we're asking that you commit a large percentage, if not to the jails, but to the grassroots organizations that are right here and the people that are working behind me to ensure that we are properly funded and we're able to house these folks and provide programmatic initiatives that are effective for New Orleans. Because we can be that three hundred, this is our third three hundred year? We don't want a model after nobody, we are the model. And so, we believe in this model and in order for us to do this, we ask that you support us financially. I hope that wasn't a campaign speech.
Ah, it's a fundraiser speech. So, I would say that we are, we are in a sense putting our money where our own bids with the work that we're doing through the reentry task force. And I understand that need and since Councilmember Williams is going to continue on this council and I've made about the last of my funding decisions, you need to pop that up.
I had several times.
Okay, yeah, Jane.
I just wanted to clear up one thing, actually. Majority of this work with task force and all of that has been paid through federal funds, grant funds. We actually, the only money we get from the general fund for reentry is by solid.
Oh, wow. In the case we're getting off easy.
Exactly. And with the federal government being what it is right now, that's an emergency.
That is. Okay, well, that obviously is something that we're going to have to be looking into for the future because this has got to continue and it's got to grow.
I was just going to say, it obviously has to continue, but beyond that, this is about scaling out so that we can touch everybody that goes into the system. Because like you said, for years, most of the folks come back home and they walk the same broken sidewalk we do. But we set them up to go right back. So, it's a, it's a really good return on putting money into this. And I think we could sell that to the conservatives as well as the liberals. This is, this is smart. I've heard a lot of you use very scientific terms in talking about the criminal justice system now. In ways that you don't hear and haven't heard in a very long time. And I think it speaks to the specificity and the science behind the decisions that we're making. So, I think funding is paramount. And as of right now, we haven't even put a drop in about the terms of the city.
All right, thank you. And last, certainly not least, we have Ash Dobbs, who has created People Building Communities.
Just want to give thanks again, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, there you go. Give thanks again for Councilmember Gidri and your inputness together and welcoming us because we're definitely a new kid on the block. Just amazing work, just to hear the other side, what's going on with reentry. We're People Building Communities, I'm the president. We just became a nonprofit, an E D yet. We're a PowerPoint, we'll get to it.
I'll help you out.
There you go.
Just tell me why.
So, next slide. Um, the idea for People Building Communities was conceived in October 2013 when our founder, a third-person guy, Ash. Worried about the large number of military veterans that are unemployed and homeless, I just wanted to do something about it. I've been in a nonprofit or community outreach for many years since I left the military. So, this was just, I guess, a further step with that. So, we've been fully operating since then and took the steps to become a five oh one three C E in August of 2017. And it's a kind of odd the way it happened. I actually went to a meeting that the Innocence Project had put together with different organizations. And Councilmember Gidri was there in Jean Faria out of Baton Rouge. And they had no idea who I was, I had no idea who they were. I just went for one purpose, to get some information on getting, uh, this gentleman right here, he's a, he's a veteran of the reentry program that's part of our organization right now. Some adjudication, we get this twit card. That's the only reason I was there. And it snowballed into us getting recommended by Councilmember Gidri to actually go ahead and become a nonprofit. So, small things that you guys do, we're living testament of what it means. Okay, three. The goal of People Building Communities is to provide training, and that could be craft training, all sorts of, all sorts of technical training, education and employment opportunities for military veterans, formerly incarcerated persons on a reentry pathway, and other adults, young adults seeking continued education and expanding their employment possibilities. I want to emphasize that, like I said, we are the new kid on the block. We're brand new. All of our members work in the petrochemical industry, we actually work on plant. So, we're not pros like you guys. And that's what we literally are. We're the gatekeepers to bring the folks that you guys bring to a certain point onto the plant. Um, we serve as a bridge between schools, we've got members in many schools. Other service providers and employers by leveraging our contacts across the petrochemical industry. I'm sure everybody's heard of the term, uh, right beat to death, the little boy network. It's, it is a huge, huge network. But we're a part of the network that you guys don't even see. For example, one of our board members alerted me about a week ago that Valero in St. Charles is hiring twenty-five brand-new operators, high school diploma, GED, that type of info, insider info that you guys have no access to. So, that's what we're attempting to do when you have folks that kind of reach a certain point in their reentry. If any of you else will take it to the next step. This method combined with, oh, hey, that's right. This method combined with personalized membership and all, everything we do is hands-on. Our board members, most of our board members are in school right next to our clients, if you can believe that. I myself have been in ABC School, graduated three times. The heavy equipment operator course, the safety course, and last week the electrical course. We feel that's the approach we want to take. It's much easier to mentor them when they're sitting next to you in class, hold them accountable. And also, we picked up a lot of certifications along the way to be able to even, how would you say, tutor on certification tests. So, that, that's our approach, it's kind of time-consuming, but it works for us. Personalized membership and peer support will be, provides each client with the necessary tools as you guys have all, iteratively. Live skills, continued education, employment for us to succeed. And we actually have several clients that are in several schools at the same time. We're pretty educational intensive. As part of our membership program, and everybody in the photo there is present or past member of our program, people, meaning board members and clients are probably attending several schools. ABC School out of Baton Rouge, University of Texas at Long Island, New West Community College, Columbia Southern University, and BRCC, and also, I don't think it's up there, but we have several schools. So, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of our wheelhouse right there, is to get folks educated with a living wage skill and transition them from that onto employment in the petrochemical industry. Another facet of what we do, People Building Communities, clients participate and board members in a variety of team building, volunteer activities to promote the tradition and give back to local communities. Because that's one thing we, we find useful, to building self-esteem and character with anyone, whether they're reentering society or just a normal member of society. Because you have to give back, that kind of helps to build your self-esteem outside of experiences that you've had, you don't want to define. Some examples, Louisiana Area Flood Relief Efforts of 2016 and frankly, you see me on the side not doing much. Looking there. Recent Cross America Day, we just did that last year in December, I think it was, in UCD Mo. One of the guys that came through your program and another gentleman, Jerome. That gentleman also came through you guys' reentry program on the left-hand side. So, we try to keep people busy with meaningful activities. And this is something that we've done for three years, before I forget. I hit myself. We've got the next one planned, here's a flyer, we invite everybody to come down at Club Istanbul, Cafe Istanbul, keep me right, Ron. February twenty-eighth, where we partner with the Innocence Project in New Orleans and do a big fundraiser, it's a lot of fun. We involve the artistic community, comedians, writers, musicians, rappers, to come out and just raise awareness about the Innocence Project and also our organization. I'm sure you see Mo Hamidov on the slide to the left because he's a performer, he donates his talents and everything. It's a lot of fun, so hopefully we'll see him. What is needed for your clients? A commitment to continue education will help, will help anyone. But something that we picked up along the four years that we've been doing this, if you don't encourage people to stay committed to a continued education, you're not, you're not, you're not really going to get much traction out of them. They'll go for a certain point in our experience and then you'll kind of peter off. So, that's why we keep folks encouraged to stay in school and be willing to give back to local communities. Because we definitely have seen the benefit, which I have Mo right here attest, of self-esteem and also character building by having people give back that you give to them. The best way to promote lasting changes, we see in our communities, is to empower the locals. And that's something that, that, you know, I find, I find very encouraging. Mo, how many people, Mo, Jerome? Yeah, Jerome could help me get through. Yeah, Michelle, um, yeah, several people. We've had clients that have come out of reentry that have referred other clients to us. So, it's kind of like a creeping vine, you know, so it's working good. This is all new, like I said, we're new kids on the block, but it's apparently something you guys have been doing for years is working good on our end, so keep up the good work. To empower the locals through access to education and middle-class employment coupled with community improvement activities. I think that's the last slide. Something I wanted to mention, really quick, I'm not sure, we're here for a bit, okay?
Oh, yeah, the website.
Right now, we're, have a meeting Friday with a gentleman that's a part of the Urban League. What we do, we specialize in the industrial market. Uh, what we do, we specialize in the industrial market, petrochemical industries, we, that's, that's where our warehouse is. But we've got clients that can't get the security licenses at the moment, or, you know, there might not be a job available for them. So we're partnering with the Urban League right now to form a commercial side to what we do also. Something we ran into. Um, you're definitely not going to read through all this, but this is the Baton Rouge Business Report. Um, as you read this long and lengthy treatise on economic growth in Louisiana, Texas, Illinois, North Carolina, and California. In Louisiana, there's a fifty billion, that's just the baseline, uh, boom going on right now throughout the petrochemical industry. Fifty thousand million. And we haven't been able to keep up with folks that are certified, because everybody's almost got to be certified on these plants right now. Simply because, I don't know, maybe we're lacking more people than we have walking around. So, a lot of folks are, yeah, there you go, sometimes. But, uh, a lot of folks are expats from other states. Uh, one of our board members, he actually lives in California, he comes to work in Louisiana. And that's a sad testament to us, that we've got people coming here taking our high paying jobs. And we've got more than enough folks that we can, you know, excuse to, uh, keep our families out of these storms. But, um, so that's one of the big incentives I wanted to point out to everybody here. You talk about a living wage, we've got huge markets on the, these investor facilities right now that can't keep up with the manpower. Um, not sure if y'all are familiar with it, but we have, uh, we have certain processes of work schedules. The main one is a maintenance schedule where we keep upkeep with the plants, you know, pretty much preventing maintenance. The next one would be a project where someone wants to expand a certain process to, uh, increase production of a certain, uh, commodity. And the last one is called a turnaround, it's where you're running these facilities twenty-four hours a day during sixty-five days a year. That's a lot of work and time, we've got to shut down sometimes a month, two, three, four months to get it back up to standard. That's a huge amount of work requiring a huge amount of manpower that we can't even keep up with. So, maybe that's an incentive for everybody in the room to, uh, just keep doing what you're doing. Also partner with us to bring your folks towards us. That's all I got, everybody.
Wow, man, thanks. Um, I really had no idea when I was going to the, uh, the meeting for Innocence Project that I'd be running into you guys and bringing this partnership forward. So I, I hope that this exposure adds you to the number because, um, I mean, you've got the jobs, right?
Yeah, yeah.
How?
Not putting Mo on the squad like I've been doing for the last ten minutes.
You haven't.
Um, Mo completed the reentry program and Mo, you took me.
Hello, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Mohamed Jikani, and, uh, I was a part of the reentry program that is, uh, in place at the Louisiana State Penitentiary. Um, I was in a facility incarcerated, uh, called Seafeld, and it was shut down. And the entire facility was moved to Angola, and they let, uh, qualified inmates be a part of the reentry program. And I was able to get a welding certification together, uh, level one, two, and three on a certified combination welder. Been doing pretty good since I've been home. With the help of this brother, uh, who I met, who, a lady named Sharon, who's now the, uh, Secretary over the organization of Work for the Airport on my release. And, uh, this is the real, uh, it works. And just the motivation and mentorship to strive towards education and to continue to educate myself is fruits and a fun. It works.
Great. Thank you so much, Mo, uh, thanks for being here today. Uh, and, uh, it does, it does seem like, uh, this is a new addition that could be a very good addition. How long does it take to get these certifications to work in the plants?
It, it depends. Um, each plant has a different level of, uh, security that needs to be, uh, cleared. Uh, the twit card is what we're talking about, maritime, pretty much. Um, Mo is an interesting case, as you, you can, you can remember. We had no idea what to do, I mean, we're brand new, so Mo was a part of our organization, he had completed his NCCR training and couldn't get a job, just didn't get a twit card. So, we, through some other, uh, providers, we found out what to do, basically write letters of recommendation and also document, as we did with, uh, burning other, um, things to the federal judge that's in charge of that. So we picked up a lot by just a little hands-on approach. Um, like I said, it's, it's, it's different for each plant. The twit card is the base standard, but they, like, they all work, they have something else called a security passport, which is another grade above the twit card. But we're, we're, uh, a lot of us have been in this field or this field of business for a long time, so pretty much we can kind of guide anyone where they've got to go, including nuclear plants, so.
Perfect. And you know, makes me wonder how many other organizations there are out there that we haven't connected with yet. Um, and I know, uh, yeah, I know some, of course, um, and, uh, but, uh, it, it just, it seems that there are to be just a central place where you guys get, you know, put on a, a website, site, or you could, oh, before I forget, how do we contact you? How does, how does anyone listening to today's meeting contact your, your organization?
Plenty of business cards and plenty of brochures that I'm going to hand out for anybody interested.
For the people who are watching, this will be on, we got this channel on Cox over the next month, probably enough several times. So if you can give us a phone number or a website or an email address?
Yes, no problem. Um, you know, it's going to be on TV, but. Um, we've got a website, not a website, we've got an email address, azob@peoplebuildingcommunities.org and my phone number, six seven eight two zero one seven nine six one. Um, that, that'll be that for now, we're going to hand out the brochure that's got several in my.
Okay. Azob, A-Z-A-B.
Z-A-A-B at peoplebuildingcommunities.org.
Very good, thank you.
And also for the reentry task force, um, we have a website, you can go to reentry, N-O-L-A, reentry.org. Um, and you can put out the contact sheet, you'll get to one of us, um, our task force meetings are open to anyone. Um, and we're always expanding the membership. Um, so for instance, there's a task force meeting tomorrow, um, at three o'clock at Golden Industries, um, so anybody's welcome to attend. Um, the goal is for the task force is to be an ever-expanding tent. Uh, we have no belief that the reentry providers within the state are going to shrink, we're always going to need more help. And so if anyone is interested in being a part of this, either as an organization or an individual, we welcome you and we look forward to it.
Very good, and it's tomorrow at three o'clock at Good Rule Industries, that's on, uh, on two way now.
Okay, one hundred and two way.
Okay, um, Councilmember Williams.
I, I just want to say that this whole collaboration, the task force and everything that's, um, sort of scaled out from there, um, is, is a true example of, of real need, meaning, uh, folks who really want to solve problems. And, and as you said, that tent cannot be bigger than that. Um, and when you talk to Language, being those guys who own a lot of the petrochemical corridor, uh, plants down the corridor, they have more jobs than people. And so basically what the state of Louisiana has done for a number of years is a warehouse, work for them. And so now we've got powers that be, I'm talking about all of y'all, and, and, and the folks that work with you, redefining what we think is successful. And, 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 and be tooling people who may have not had the best shot on the front end to plug right in and help our community grow. I mean, we, they call this region Baton Rouge, the corridor, a, a super region. And it's because of those jobs. And the talent is where it happens. And you all are getting prepared, I just want to thank you for your effort.
All right, very good, and, and we have a question back?
Oh, yes, my name is Kevin Shrum, I just want to listen to everybody on the board speaking, I just, I'm, I'm excited because I'm with the board up front to know that some of these same agents that are speaking, that are giving guys a second chance to come out here and have a chance to be able to reintegrate back into society. After doing thirty years in prison, some of these same agents gave me the opportunity to do what I do today. Without them, what's telling about my life to be up today? Or especially thanks to Judge Kelvin Johnson for believing in my vision, coming home, fulfilling many people would give me a chance, understanding sometimes we have to invest into the same people that destroyed the community to help build them back up, and also helping brothers coming home to reestablish who they are, I just want to thank y'all.
That was incredible, thank you. Yes, sir.
Oh, my name is Brad, so I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not anybody, uh, put it in the visual, uh, district city. Uh, I'm recently returned from prison, as you I know Kevin. Uh, extended time in prison, I was a life. Uh, nineteen ninety-four, I was attacked, I was killed, I've lived a different life since, I was one of the Arrow Lights. Uh, my tenure inside of prison in Angola, uh, I took and I took it to the political atmosphere. I ran Angola Life Association for maybe six, seven years. Um, I took, I couldn't get into some of the programs that you're talking about, like, like so far, for instance, your welding programs, your automotive programs as a life, they're a backlog, this is for it. But I was one of the individuals that wanted to take, um, trades happening in that period of time on my sentence. Uh, but I never said to myself I would die in prison. Uh, I exited prison about thirty-eight, uh, only to come home, hit Katrina, and then, uh, suffer back through a whole bunch of other stuff. Uh, I felt, uh, there was no place for me in society here. Uh, I tried to explain it to the probation and parole. Uh, I still have a lot of things tied up inside me. Right now, I'm, I'm like a bit taken back because this is actually real. Uh, you sit back in prison, watch the stuff on TV, and, you know, prisoners for the most part are trying to see who's on, uh, the, the, the top, the real. We want to watch when, uh, we want to spend, uh, precious time not doing anything to, uh, better themselves. Uh, this time, I went through, I went back in, actually asked myself, I put myself back. Because I had to readjust, I had to readjust and reevaluate myself. And I went back in for a decade, uh, to clean out my parole. But inside of that, uh, I left prison, I went to one of the, I believe, the state's greatest facility outside of Angola, would be Rayburn Correctional Center. It's a straight-up north and south, wild talent, if you're not put game to your food, you don't believe that you deserve anything but that much to reach for. Uh, but it opened a door for us for education. And Mr. Cook, Dr. Cook, they provided us with an opportunity to change through education. Dr. Cook wrote a book, uh, a, a thesis related to, uh, recidivism. And I used to get upset at that when I hear people like you, guys, that are in position, uh, say that, why is the prisoner recidiving? And they give all types of reasons, why are you recidiving? But I'm like, wow, this is not really your thing, because I'm full of education. But why do I continue to do the things that I continue to do? Because internally, mentally, and I heard somebody talk about it, and I'm happy to hear this stuff. Mentally, we go through some things in prison, like a dog going through a canine process. And once this process happens, you've never known. After about a year inside of, uh, jail, that person pops from you, just five years inside of a state facility. That person never comes back, leaves. Now, does that say that individual, uh, can't recover? Yes, I'm recovering. Uh, I'm not proud of my past, but it is what it ma, it is what it has made me today. Uh, I'm more confident in today that I'll make it, heavy hearing this, the twit card, you know, uh, can't get it. Why, you're looking into my rest register, which stretches back to about eighty-seven, so.
Never give up, brother, it took me eleven months.
You know, and I won't, I mean, I have a fall pot, and, you know, who got it and I didn't? And I'm like, wow, how can you get it and I didn't? But, and I was sitting down with Count Zara, I was sitting down with Paul Kine, and I got actual letters from him that some of these things, but there are laws in place that won't prohibit us, that prohibit us from getting sponges and keeping people from looking at certain things. But that's neither here nor there, but I'm just wanting to say I'm thankful to have this opportunity to sit in this room right now, just this school. Uh, and, uh, I would like to become a part of some of these things. One of the things my board officer recently told me yesterday is that, Brad, you have to get behind and do the things that you did in prison. And in prison, I was a part of the restraining cycle, I was a part of the reentry cycle, I taught the life. I taught all the program listed up there, but it gave me a sense of reason and made me feel warm. And to come home, now I have to get behind that, now be crawling, be starting my own foot. I'm really, 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 uh, I can say now without fear of contradictory and, uh, argue with a person and say that this thing is really real. There are people that are actually preparing, there are people actually trying. And I'm just, you know, I'm thankful to even have this moment right now. So, I'm going to take up some more time, I guess, so without you, a couple of guys, Brad, some guys, and forward.
Very definitely, very definitely, thank you. And I know from when we all met in the pre-meeting, how much incredible energy you all had, and, um, I think we could have sat and everyone talked all day long, even though you all weren't together, it, it, because you have such excitement around what you do. And today, it's been more stayed because we had the presentations and all. So is there anything, as we close up, that you all, one of you were sitting there thinking, oh, I just definitely want to get this out before this meeting is over, or, uh, just want to say one more thing? Or do you feel like we said, no?
Um, just since we're on TV, make sure that people heard it the last time. Um, if you're interested in being part of the task force, um, you can find us online at nolareentry.org. Um, you can also send an email to reentry@nola.gov. Um, we are very welcoming and we're looking forward to working with you. If you're interested in the subject and you have something you think you can add, please do. Um, it's going to take an arm to do this work.
And if you are someone who is trying to successfully reenter, can you contact us?
Same way.
Same way. Very good. All right, uh, I just want to say how incredibly impressive all of you were and are, and, uh, we appreciate your work. And it's really my honor to be able to help you get word out there.
Thank you for that, too. Can I get everybody's business card?